You ready Josh? Josh?
Okay, Mary, go ahead, we're live.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the council meeting for Tuesday, May 10th, 2022 to order at seven o'clock. Please rise for the president. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with both of them. Council member Castaneda, here. Council member Carrasco.
Here.
Council member Alvarado.
Here.
Council members Alvala.
Here.
And council member Delapoy.
Here.
I want to welcome everyone tonight. So, thank you for coming. We're gonna go ahead and go on to vote on the meeting agenda. We need a motion for the meeting agenda.
I motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Andy and second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We should approve. We're gonna go ahead and go to number five, which is visitors' comments. And just for the record, we have a full house and you just get three minutes today, okay? Thank you. Okay, so if you, whoever wants to go ahead and go to the podium, state your name and the address, and you can go ahead and state your comment if you want. Three minutes, huh? Okay. Alright, Sophie Sotelo, 220 Cedar Street. Okay, I have from my last time I was here. I still want you guys to reconsider renting the bank and spending all that money of the remodeling and moving the 911 systems and moving the cameras, alarms, systems, phone lines, and just stay here. Did Josh, did he have Josh correctly say that you're only gonna be there until October? He can answer that when I'm done, I'm sorry. You only have three minutes. When we saw that time till October, and even though we can't afford to be moving over and spending all this time and renting that place for five years, should building, that's not even ours. We've already spent so much money remodeling it already before the council has even approved the contract. If it's just wheelchair accessible, you know, they can come through this little wheelchair ramp or remodel this door just for the, for the wheelchair accessible people, and it's our building, not someone else's building. And also like you reconsider eliminating the public works director position. It's in the budget. The, the city was looking, citizens were complimenting the parks and the cemetery when they hired that guy because he was monitoring the employees. And all of a sudden you let him go, and now we had complaints at the last meeting about how the cemetery was looking. Not because of the snow, because we've mowed our lawn for three or four times already since the snow. And employees, according to Ellen, now you have to have a break room for the employees, where are they gonna have one over there? Are they still gonna come here? So you're still gonna have double, double bills for this building and that building. You can't let this one go and deteriorate, you still have to have utilities here. And I think that is it, thank you. Thank you.
I say, I know we don't do the back and forth, but I can clarify my, my statement if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay, okay, so what I was saying that you probably misunderstood, so October 2021 is when the, when the bank moved out of that building. So that's what I was saying, and so the cost comparison that I did for 2021 was with their bills from up to October and then our bills up to October. So, yeah, we don't have to move out in October, that was, that was when they left, so there's only 10 months on that piece of the comparison so that it's accurate, is what I was, is what I was trying to say. Okay? Thank you.
They moved out last year in October, no, before that.
Josh?
Yeah.
Josh, are you?
Um, yes, yeah, so I can't say when they physically moved out, but they still have a power bill in October. And it's only a portion of one, so probably, I mean, we could say that that was September maybe, but that's, that's what their information here has, so there's still a bill for in October.
As far as the power goes.
Correct.
You're right, okay, but they moved out before that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You have any more citizens' comments? If you have a comment or a question, you could stand at the podium. Because once it's closed, Mary. Yeah, because once it's closed, it's closed.
Hi, my name is James Fox Southern at 723 Main. And as far as this whole building goes, I mean, you know, we can either, as a town, we can stay as we are, or we can show progress. To me, to me, that's cleaner over there, it's nicer, wheelchair accesses are there. Certainly, we could come up, or the city of Mapton, or whoever could come up with a use for this building. Whether it's an extension of the police department, or an extension of the fire department, or whatever, whatever it is, but to me, it's just, in, in my eyes, what I see is, you know, I've lived here all my life, besides, turns out I've been gone Alaska, but we need to show progress, we need to show their town is cleaner. We need to show that, you know, that people would want to come here and actually live here. Anyway, that's what I gotta say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Diaz, Irishman at 122 First Avenue. Yeah, the reason I'm here is because I believe that if we move forward, it also shows improvement and progress instead of just staying where we're at. And as far as these plays, you know, in, in creating, you know, we don't have to allow that, but you know, we can use it for other, other things, you know. I was also thinking, you know, a small environment, to me, you know, this is personal to me, it could cause more like a hostile environment, you know, no space. That space level, we're sitting right here, it's smaller than what here, you know. And again, that plays out there, you know, on level too, you know, it is, you know, you're gonna end up getting a lawsuit if somebody trips, you know, you gotta think of the consequences, you know. And another thing that this here will show an impact to is like everything else that the new administration has been doing as far as moving the graffiti, officers always for you, and you know, taking care of their business, because I've had experience where I call them and they're here, and the county sheriff can't do nothing about it, because this is not the turf. You know, but I recommend to them, you know, that this, like, the, the sir was saying right now, that yeah, it'll inspire others and motivate others to come together, work together, when you see something's getting done. Like even these guys, there's not a regular mower, there's a weed whacker out there. They're out there, you know, that we can see them. I get compliments from people that visit us or seen around here, you know. Especially the main street we have here, you know, people going to the museum, going elsewhere, for these routes on First Street. You know, they see all these graffiti, all this stuff here, they're like, the first thing they're gonna think, oh, I wouldn't live there, you know, it's bad, it's dangerous, you know. But I think we gotta start from here, that way it's showing, you know, the building got painted and everything. You've seen the work done, that's why it moves me to come here and speak up, you know, about it. We should move forward, not just stay where we're at. And then, you know, the rest will fall into place as you guys make your meetings and plans. I wouldn't worry about the negativity about it, you know.
Thank you.
Oh, my name is Antonio Moreno, and I live in 405 Washington Street, here in Mapton. And then, my point is too, if we, if you guys gonna rent the bank for a good reason, or using it for a good reason, we can do it. We have the money, let's go do it. Some people in the past year, they've been here for 20 years, and I never see, they haven't done nothing. Completely nothing. We, we pay money for taps, for fixing, for fixing the sidewalks. I don't see the progress. There is three bank accounts in the city, that we don't know who's managing those bank accounts. Who's taking care of that money? Or where our money goes? And then, like everybody says, we need a better future for this town. You know, I have a beautiful home in here in town, I own three houses, and I pay more than $5,000 in tax. And I think it's a good investment, we can use this building for more reasons. We got more things to do in this building. This building is not, we're not gonna forget this building. It's our history, and it's gonna be here forever. If we like, we don't like it, this is a good place to keep it, and then we can move on, and it's a good idea. I think it's really a good idea. So I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, my name's Doran Pivens, and I live at 220 South Street, and I do agree that we should move something new. We've been here for a long time, and just the fact moving over there, I think it's really great. I, I, I agree with the moving, 100%. I think it's, it's gonna be good for all of us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Rosa Martinez, I live at 414 Cedar Street. And I agree with what all these gentlemen have, have said so far. This lady as well. We need, we need to move on. This little town has been like in a time warp for, I don't know how many years. And we need change. I guess we started now with the Dollar General, and, you know. That's the kind of change we need. We, you know, that's what life is about, change. We can't just stay, you know. And the fact that we're here at this meeting, agreeing that change is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Raffi Gares, I live at 232 South Street, and I also do agree. I wanna see some change, you know. Maybe something else better, you know, it, it's gotta start somewhere. But I hope we don't forget this building either.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? So, um, I just, I wanna thank everybody who's come in to support us tonight for the building, you know, we do need a change, Mapton is needing a change, Mapton's ready for a change. There's a lot of new things coming to the city of Mapton. You know, I'm excited, we've got sergeant, we have a new chief, we got two new police cars out there. We're moving forward, Mapton's going forward. And we can't do it without the citizens, so we need, I'm glad to see a house full tonight here in the Chambers School, you know, and it's a positive change. Thank you, Mary. So, you know, we, we've got some new council, and, you know, we don't always agree, but I think what we need to do is move forward for the citizens, what's best for the citizens and what's best for the city. So I wanna thank everybody for coming out here tonight and supporting us.
Anyone comment?
Nope, you have, go ahead.
Good job on the cars, a good buy. I think we're gonna see some positive things there. Sound like more people are wanting to move to the bank. I was never against it, but I needed to see the financials to make sure it was feasible and reasonable. I think that's something else we need to see in the city, is what Josh presented to us tonight, with just some simple spreadsheets on the accounts and amount of money we have to spend on certain projects. I'm not saying we need to see what you're doing every minute of the day, but I think it'd be really good to the citizens to know, we have this much money to spend for this. Just that simple. And the problem we got into with the bank was, nobody knew what it was gonna cost. Everybody was speculating, everybody was in the dark. When you bring it into the light, things seem to make a little more sense. So, it's just, it's just a lot better to have full disclosure as much as possible in the situation that we have right now. I'm seeing that they're marking out for the new streets, that's kind of exciting, and I know that money, and I think somebody's probably gonna talk up on that tonight. Appreciate you guys here again. Great job on the city cleaning up cemetery. I was there today and it looked great. Very, very nice, so. Kudos to the city.
Could you, sir, could you address your name and address, please, for the vendor?
Address? Callum Mears, 551 Hope Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mears. So, our guys.
My name is Teresa Vargas, and I live on 617 Burnt Street. My concern is still with the water. We're still getting nasty water. You open the water and it's dark, it's nasty, you can't drink it or cook with it. One of the citizens here in Mapton, and his name is Luis Galar Sanz, was commenting that his pipes get plugged because they get so much sand in the pipes. Are we doing anything about it? What are we doing with the water?
So, Luis will need to come in and give us his address so we can put a work order in for that.
Okay.
And we can let the public works guys know, and they.
So, how are we treating the water? Because it's not, it's not drinkable in, in town.
The water's been getting treated where, where we need to be with it. It's, we have someone contracted in, so we have someone at our water, and we have someone doing wastewater. So we have everything under control, but we will talk to Joe tomorrow and have him look into it. I know they're getting ready to flush the hydrants here pretty soon, so.
Would that make any changes?
I think in the past it has, hasn't it? Yeah, so we'll look into it tomorrow, I'll talk to the public works.
And somebody will get back to me?
No, I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're gonna go ahead and go on to five, the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda, A to D.
We have a motion by Andy. Seconded by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. So there's no public hearing. We're gonna go ahead and go on to old business. We need a motion for approval of the resolution 2022-12, a resolution of the city of Mapton, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Alfred Webb Investment Properties LLC, Kurt Ballitt, managing member for 4A B Street building. We have a motion. Motion by Diane.
I second it.
Seconded by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Did she motion to approve? Is that what Diana said? I said we have a motion.
No, she didn't, so I'll do a motion to approve resolution 2022-12.
And we have a motion by Andy and seconded by?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We will now take votes by roll call. Castaneda?
Here.
Know your vote.
Oh, yes, I want the better, bye.
Carrasco?
Yeah.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Alvala? No. Delapoy?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go on to B. Motion approved. Oh, motion approved, sorry. For the new building. So now, we're gonna want to be, we need a motion for old business. For the resolution 2022-15, authorizing the mayor to eliminate the public works director position. We have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to eliminate public works director.
And seconded by?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We will now take votes by roll call. Castaneda?
I need a motion for this to be approved on, the public works director.
That you and I eliminate the position.
I want to eliminate the position.
Carrasco?
Yes.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Alvala? No. Delapoy?
No.
Motion approved. Now we're gonna go on to new business. We don't have any new business, we're gonna go ahead and give a mayor's report. Can we let you know? Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, so. So, the, the primary reason we're here, and first of all, this is Michael's office, is that we've been talking about the parking right projects. Probably seeing a future time in which we, we talked about it, and so it doesn't require any formal council action, we just wanted to present everywhere rapid design. If you guys have any questions or input, this is, now's your chance. If you want more time to look at it, you can certainly pass that along to city staff and then send it to us. And, and so, you know, obviously you have, have more time if you, if you'd like to look at it in further detail. So I just primarily, I'll, I'll kinda turn it over to Michael to talk about this project. Big picture, it's fully grant funded. Yes, so just get that upfront, but you can do the details of the project.
Sure, sure, so at the risk, maybe this has been discussed, at the risk of potentially stealing some of the mayor's glory here, the city did receive $75,000 in grant funding from TIB Complete Streets Program. $50,000 of that was geared towards transit stop improvements, which are being completed as part of this project, so kinda helps the overall project budget a little bit. And then $25,000 of that is geared towards a pedestrian crossing signal at Fifth and E Street. It's called a Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon System, or as a lot of people call them, little blinky lights. Pedestrians walk up. So, so with that additional funding, we've kind of opened up the flexibility a little bit with the, the design. And I say that with a little caveat, because, you know, budgets are typically, typically tight, we try to get as much built as we can within the budget, and so we think the layout that we have in front of you today is just right at about what the budget can hold at this point, and you'll see the first page there is an outline of the construction cost estimate. And then the second part of that page is the total funding for the project, broken out by funding source. So, the finances are kind of laid out there for you. So I'll just kind of explain some overview of the layout there that you have on page two, and I think a black and white version of this was sent for packet, but I think this color version is a little, a little more explanatory there. The page here. So, we have 21 total parking spaces in the paved parking lot, and that breaks out into 17 regular parking spaces, two ADA compliance spaces with full ADA compliance to get onto the bus, and then two motorcycle spaces, kind of tucked over there in the corner, as the city's option whether or not those, those stay included, but just, just throwing it out there as far as the city's options there. And then, of course, this will include frontage improvements along South Street from Main Street through the alley, and there's two existing lights that serve that park there. So, basically, the parking lot is centered on those two existing lights that, that serve the existing park there. And that's kind of shown here on the plans. There's a stormwater swale, that's kind of the, the blobs that you see around the perimeter of the asphalt there. That's where stormwater would go, so. I'm happy to open it up for any questions that council may have. So, sorry, I just add, so big picture, I know we talked about this before, but in case I didn't, given a back, back story previously, the idea of this, this project, so it would essentially, you would use that, that corner where the city already had a parking right that's gravel, and makes it a, a formal paved parking lot, so that people that are leaving their cars here and going up into the, some of the processing facilities nearby, have a safe place to leave their cars. And kind of make that a, a formal place instead of parking behind gas stations and some of that other. And so it's, it's taking that area that's already gravel, kind of designated as a parking right, and making it a more formal as well.
So, when will this project start?
We are, we're looking to get it to construct this, this construction season. We'll have to, you know, the city can always turn a project out for bid, and with, it appears to be within budget now, but as everybody knows, this day and age, inflation seems to be taking, taking hold, so we're, we're planning to get it out, you know, within a couple of months, finalized design, so. Provided that the budgets there and contractors are still interested in work this summer, so, you know.
You have any questions for, for him, council?
Yeah, I assume all the green is grass. It's green in the map.
Yeah, 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 so you know, it's, it's a very visible corner of an intersection in the city, obviously. So we'd like to kind of both provide a functional parking lot, but also some aesthetic improvements in the area, so the, the green is grass, that green could be turned into gravel for additional parking, if we don't, if we want less maintenance. That's kind of one of the, the talking points here, is obviously grass requires irrigation and maintenance. So that's a consideration that the city has to, has to take in. Also, you know, grass, grass typically requires additional funding to construct. You gotta grant it, you gotta put in the irrigation system. So there are some trade-offs between, you know, do you want irrigation, or do you want to update the illumination system more so in the parking lot? Those sorts of things. And that's where we're looking for with, this is your chance, you have, you have a preference, you have a, a, something you'd like different, this is kind of an, an opportunity to have that discussion, where it's, you know, it's like the design is not all the way done, so we still have time to change things. Versus, once it, once it's being built, it's really hard to change stuff. You pay, you pay a premium for contractors if you're changing a lot.
So you're saying like the, the grass stuff that would be for the city to do? This sprinkler system?
No, so we currently, we have it included in the budget for a contractor doing, installing an irrigation system, hydro seat, but long-term cost is what we're, we're saying.
Okay.
City, city, we need to maintain the irrigation system, maintain the, the grass. And there are other, I'll go hard scaping options that, that can be employed here, so.
And since right now we don't have any sprinklers there, would that be included in this?
Yes, yes, it is part of the irrigation system, so I believe there are some old water meters that were installed to property, not sure where they're at. So, as, as part of previous projects, if, if not water is, is available along that north shoulder of the road, city water, so. It would just take installation of a, a meter and, you know, backflip preventer for irrigation. So the trade-off would be if you spend money on that and you're not spending it on other things. You want the, you want the grass, irrigation, and that, which one looks like it's reasonable? Yeah, so the, the current footprint kind of, it spends more money on, on grass and irrigation, less money on illumination, new, new lighting. It looks, there are two existing lights out there that we've kind of designed around to try to reuse. Looks like Pacific Power has actually updated those two LED, which I assume has happened in the recent past as part of some of the previous city projects. With the size of the parking lot, we would, we would suggest potentially one or two additional light poles go in. And that could be something that's included with the project, although it would be tight to say within the existing budget. Or something that the city wants to do on their own after the project. We could always have the contractor install a conduit for the wire for lights on the opposite side. That way you don't have overhead wires through parking lot, so.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions? Thank you.
I guess just generally, we proceed with the current configuration and.
All right, I say yes?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions about any of the projects, we're happy to, happy to answer those as well.
We have any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and go on to nine, the mayor's report. So I just wanna kind of just let everyone know that we did have the guys go out and do the cemetery yesterday and today. So we're gonna be keeping on it. I know the weather hasn't been good, you know, and it hasn't been permitting. And I know we have to watch the equipment. So I really, when it's raining or the grass is wet, I prefer them not to mow the lawn just because it's gonna get stuck underneath and build up, you know. And we, I'm one that wants to take care of the city's equipment. I don't wanna just, you know, go out there and, you know, misuse it. So I'm really cautious about that. But I did have a meeting with the guys and so we're gonna have a plan on how we're gonna do it, you know, from now on. So they'll be out spraying hopefully this week. I know they're working on parks today and tomorrow. And hopefully, weather permits, they'll start painting streets again. So, okay. So counsel reports? Anybody have anything to report?
I wanna address our attorney. I don't know in proper Chinese.
You can, Bill, do you want counsel, my bureau, to talk to you now or would you like to talk to her in private?
Well, is this, is this properly before the, is it on the agenda?
No, it is not on the agenda.
Oh.
Is it on the agenda that you gave it to us?
I don't believe I need an agenda to send an email to anyone, so.
It's an email form, sir, it's in a letter. I am going to address it one way or the other, either tonight or in private, but I do need to have a discussion with you over it.
Well, you'll either do it, and you said there was no executive session earlier today.
I didn't get the letter till after the in-between meetings.
Normally attorney-client, the city is my client, so normally conversations with the city.
You're part of the city, excuse me. You are our attorney also.
Correct. And I speak to my clients in private normally.
Okay, I'll set up a meeting with you then.
Well, what, what, you can do it in executive session, so.
Okay, two weeks from now then, it's fine.
Any other council members have anything?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the city clerk.
I do.
Sylvia?
I do not, thank you.
Bill, do you have anything?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
Okay. Josh?
No, ma'am, I think I probably said enough for one night, so.
Okay, is anybody online that like, have?
No, ma'am, uh-uh.
Okay. Chief?
Yes. I'd like to give an update on the vehicles. Does anybody hear me?
Okay, I'd like to give an update on the vehicles from the last council meeting that we had. We ended up getting two vehicles. The Ford Explorer is a 2015 vehicle. It's parked out in front of the PD. We ended up purchasing it for 3,900 and had to spend 1,400 with tax to finish the lights on the Explorer and the siren and, and it runs great. Spent $398 with tax for the decals that are on there. The Ford Taurus is a 2015, 103,000 miles. We spent, I believe, 2,800 on that one. We haven't done anything to that one. The lights work, everything works on that one, the radio. The only thing with the Ford Taurus is it needs a modem. And the Ford Explorer needs a radio modem and then they both need a computer system. They are still owned by the county. They allowed us to bring them to Mapton and begin putting our decals and begin our work on them to, to get the lights to work and the siren. We're working on the paperwork and finalizing hopefully payment. And once it gets transferred over, then that same day we'll take the modems of two of the patrol cars that are here, computers. And so we already have that, but we can't switch it over until it gets licensed under Mapton and insured under Mapton. And then once we do that, then we can switch the equipment over and then within a day they should be ready to, to be used in, in here in Mapton. I'm gonna put this up for discussion. We have two Impalas and one Dodge Charger. I'm contemplating, but I want to bring it up for discussion, is at some point, consider getting rid of two of the Impalas. They're outdated now that we have two nicer vehicles. Maybe a possible option is if Public Works needs one of them, you know, it'd be nice to, if they can use one of them, that'd be great. I'd like to talk with them and see if one of them can be used for Public Works. The county unofficial there, I heard that they got some COVID money. And I heard they're supposed to purchase more vehicles. And at that point, I would like to consider maybe getting rid of the Dodge Charger. It has a V8 motor. It uses a lot of fuel and with today's prices, the cost is a lot more than the other vehicles. The two new ones we got have V6 motors. I don't believe they take as much fuel, but I think they would last us for four, five, six, seven, eight years maybe for the miles that we put on them here in town. So I would like to bring it up for discussion if anybody has questions or concerns or pleas. I'd like to see if anybody would like to talk about what I just talked about. If we can start on this end and go, go down the road or road.
Yeah, before you get rid of that Dodge Charger, I'd wait until the county decides what they're gonna do, then possibly get the two more SUVs to replace the small cars, I could say.
Yes, very good point. I like that idea.
And, and because around here, sometimes you get, in the winter time with the snow and ice, you can't get through the alleys with these little cars. Where there's, you either four-wheel drive, right?
All-wheel drive, yes. All the Ford Explorers are all-wheel drive. The Taurus is all-wheel drive, but yes. I believe that you have a very good point with the snow time. They could be used if we end up chasing somebody out of town in the dirt roads and they're, that's what county has, they have, most of their vehicles are Explorer, so that's a very good point there.
I'd wait until what the county decides and what, if they're gonna purchase new vehicles.
And then at that point, consider doing that, yeah.
And consider getting rid of the Charger and that way you save.
Plus, it's a, it is a reliable vehicle, so it does make sense to consider that, yes. Good point.
That's all I have.
I'm all for beautiful cars. Look really nicely, you do.
Thank you, yeah. Very proud of those vehicles. I'm glad Mapton has those vehicles right now. Or not legally yet, but getting there. But we're almost there. But anyway, any, anybody else for?
I just wanna let citizens know that the chief has been putting the decals on our vehicles and he is volunteering his time. He's not doing it on his work time. He's coming in in the morning and working till, in the evening and then dressing down to go and hit the road and to patrol. So the other vehicles that he put the decals on, it was all volunteer also. So he wasn't on the clock. So he's been pretty generous about donating his time for the city. So I'm pretty proud to have him on board with us. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
What are we gonna do with the old vehicles that we have at the sewer plant?
There is a plan for that in place. Can you?
That's surplus. We're gonna put them on for people to get on it.
That's in the works now and hopefully it gets done soon so we can get them off the books. And I, I don't know if we're paying insurance. Okay, but yeah, we, like, we need to get rid of them.
Andy?
I just wanna thank you, chief, for all the work, extra time that you've put into these police cars and helping out. I really appreciate it. We haven't had anybody in council with council people helping out like you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And one of the things is I, I own my own personal detailing business. I love doing that type of work. I really do. And being able to do it to these vehicles, I was, I have a lot of pride behind it and I'm lucky that I'm able to do it. So, yes.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:41.